Mr. Hayes, one is item number five, which is an ordinance approving a major variance. That was heard by our zoning board of appeals and those generally go directly to council. It mistakenly got put on this agenda. And number eight, we're not quite ready to bring number eight to you, an ordinance relating to civil service, and so we'll see that at another agenda.
Very well. Any staff reports?
I do, I would like to just update on a few things that we discussed about last week in regard to the Exelon purchase of IP. Stephen, I'll give you sort of a brief update. Things are happening very quickly. Since last Monday night, when we described the process where we were asked to support legislation but not allowed to see it, that story ran and the next day ran in the front page of the Tribune as well. And by 3:00 that next day, the ComEd as well as others held news conferences and provided the legislation to everyone for some review and explained a little bit about what was going on. So we started to get a little bit of information as early as last Tuesday. There's been considerable review and discussion of this in the News Gazette. And actually, there was a pretty good piece yesterday that described some of the details involved in this by Tom Kasek. The session to introduce this legislation begin, is initially scheduled for tomorrow morning. Attorneys representing both cities, Steve Holtz and Trish Carley representing the legal departments of both cities will be in Springfield tomorrow morning to represent some of our concerns regarding this fast-track legislation. So we're trying to feel our way through this and see where we stand and gain as much information as we can and protect our interests at this point. One of the, one of the things that we do understand about this is that we really don't have enough expertise in-house to represent our interests. We have been meeting, as you know, since the summer with the city of Champaign and the University of Illinois. And I think what we would like to propose, and I believe Champaign will bring this as an item to their council tomorrow night, is sort of an equal consortium where we would split the costs involved in obtaining some expertise to help guide us through this. So we're exploring that now, and that's probably something that you'll see in the very near term because this is happening very, very quickly. Let me just ask Steve if he wants to comment about what the activities are tomorrow. Or anything else?
No, I think at this point, we'll, we'll learn tomorrow, I presume, who it is that's going to be sponsoring this legislation. As yet, there has not been any final say on who exactly is, what representative in the House of Representatives is actually going to put their name on this thing. And we'll hear tomorrow, I presume, again, at the Utilities Committee in Springfield about kind of more in-person, face-to-face from the various players at LMI Power and Commonwealth Edison and Exelon and maybe even Dynegy about, about what it is that they hope to accomplish with this legislation. Maybe we'll get some answers about why it's been kept secret for so long. Maybe we'll get some answers about why nobody was allowed to see it for so long. But we're just not sure exactly what to expect.
We'll probably keep you posted on this every week because it's just happening at such a fast pace.
Mr. General?
Bruce, would it make sense for us to actually partner with a larger group of municipalities other than the list you said in terms of paying for legal advice since there's quite a few areas that are in the same...
We did put out some feelers on other cities that might like, might be in a position to join us, with not a very positive response at this point. Also, our interests and situation may be different than others because part of what we really need to look at is, our situation's different because of the University of Illinois. We have a generating capacity right here in this community. We already have a third of the, of the community covered by a separate system. And so some of the issues that we would look at, for example, buying the distribution system, are unique to us perhaps and not so much in common with some of the other communities.
Well, in addition to that, I think we have more of a concentration of high-tech businesses whose energy needs are very sensitive, electric needs are very sensitive as far as reliability is concerned. Not that other communities don't have them, I think we have more than, than others, and they were really able to even to avoid eruptions a second or two because of how it destroys memory and the computer functions. So I think we're unique in a couple of different ways, but you're right. We believe that other communities should be interested in this as well. Actual reaction that we've gotten from a couple of communities has been, we're gonna see if we can't get...
One of the problems, Mayor, as you just interrupted, is the lack of information. We, we actually got more information perhaps a week ahead of others, and they're just not up to speed yet with what's going on. We did contact Illinois Municipal League. They really had no idea at this point, last week, what was, what was happening because this came so fast and the process was designed to come that way. But, so, we're not sure people are fully up to speed of, and familiar or understand at this point what the potential impacts of this are on their citizens and ratepayers.
Mr. General?
Just a follow-up question. I'm wondering if the chamber or the chambers, you know, the Chamber of Commerce in the, in Champaign County would, would be interested. I mean, this is really, it's a, it's an, it's an issue for, for residential purposes, but, you know, it's really businesses that are gonna suffer from hassle and strange takeovers and, you know, backdoor deals, rate increases, et cetera. So I'm wondering if we could reach out specifically to the business community in pursuing this.
I can report on that. I did get a call this morning. I understand that Illinois Power officials did meet with some chamber and EDC officials this morning and asked them, there was an executive committee meeting of the EDC today, and asked them to take some position in support of this, but without the appropriate information. And they did call the cities, and that has been sent to a group to explore what the pros and cons are for our community, our business community and that. So there was no hasty action taken at that time. So hopefully, there would be a good discussion of merits of this before an action is taken.
Ms. Otto?
I was just wondering, has anyone talked to our local legislators? We're represented by two very capable people, Naomi Jake and Rick Winkle. Have they had anything, any input on this and what their positions might be?
Well, I spoke with them before the, well, just as the story was becoming public. And of course, as Bruce says, at that time, I think we knew more, just as much, if not more than anybody else. And so I was able to let them know that this issue was gonna come before them in the very near future and outlined the concepts that, as I understood them, that Commonwealth Edison was trying to promote in this special legislation. So they've been alerted to it, they know what our concerns are, you know, but they're in, still in that learning curve as well. We haven't gotten any commitment from them that yes or no, they're gonna be in favor of this particular legislation. As Bruce says, we don't even know who's going to be sponsoring the legislation yet. So it's all in the very beginning stages, but yes, our legislators are becoming aware of the, of the issue.
I guess I would just say as a, somebody who opposes virtually every sense of the council resolution that comes before us, there's no doubt this vitally affects our community. And for what it's worth, a resolution setting forth to our state legislatures, what we think would be the best way for them to represent us in Springfield in terms of opposing this, I think is something I would support in a minute.
So one, just a heads up, at some point, we probably will need some resources to try to pursue this, so that was the...
Thank you for the staff...
We'll keep you posted.
Thank you for the staff report. Can we get approval of the previous meeting?
Need approval?
Second.
And we've been saying that the minutes from previous meeting, approved. Any questions? Ms. Pat?
Thank you. I just have one small correction under, on the first page, under item for public input. The second sentence is, the following residents were opposed to proposed halogen aluminum 30-foot poles, but support the, and it says current lantern-style streetlights, but for clarification, since they currently don't have those, we could delete the word "current" and just say "the lantern-style streetlights." I, that would, I think that'd make it more clear.
Okay. Any other corrections? If not, all favors they are.
Aye.
Both. Here are none. The minutes are approved. For now, public input, those of you out there in the audience who would like to speak before the council, you have to fill out a yellow application and go to the clerk. You will be allowed to speak for no longer than five minutes. First on the agenda, Mr. Hiram Paley, 706 West California, how about?
Thank you very much, Mr. Hayes. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about block parties and some of the other things that you may have seen if you read the RUNA emails that come constantly. At the beginning, I do want to congratulate the mayor and thank the mayor for having been present during one of the bad times on Saturday night that we had in our block. But several weeks ago, a very nice young man came by and asked me to sign a slip of paper that if all the neighbors signed, they'd be able to have a block party on the 700 block of West California this past Saturday from 3:00 to 9:00 o'clock. Very nice young man, made very nice representations, and we thought, well, okay, let's give it a shot and see what happens. On Friday, I was a little surprised to see three porta-potties in the alleyway that goes between 709 and 711. I guess they were thinking they might have a pretty good number of people there. But we looked at the weather forecast, and my wife and I saw that we had rain predicted, and we had our fingers for, crossed that maybe things wouldn't be as bad as they, apparently the kids thought the, the crowd might come out for that evening. And the rain helped us. And the party was moved over to the Paradiso, Cafe Paradiso, and we thought terrific because we had also learned that this party was announced in the Buzz. Now, I don't know how many neighborhood parties have advertisements that they're gonna have this wonderful party inviting everybody over, which is essentially what it is, an open invitation to thousands of people who read the Buzz. I thought that was out of line with the representations that had been made to us. Anyway, we thought, 9:00 came, it was quiet, we thought, wonderful. We had been to the women's volleyball game, saw Illinois won, win another wonderful volleyball game, the women's team. Came home about 9:30 that night, things were quiet, wonderful. I went upstairs, watched the World Series, turned on the TV, watched the World Series, saw that, and dozed off after the end of the World Series. But then I woke up, turned off the TV, and suddenly, there was more noise pouring into that house than I've ever heard on that block. This has been a pretty good year. We've had pretty good young people living in the neighborhood. They have not had loud parties this year. But that was a party, you might call it the mother of all parties, as far as I'm concerned, as far as the amount of noise that was, I mean, that was coming from that party. About quarter of 11, I decided I'd go outside, see what the situation was there. The mayor was there, three police officers were there, they were talking to these young people. I thought the police were quite reserved, good at how they were handling it, telling the young people to turn the noise off. I was surprised at how many young people will argue with police officers. In my day, we didn't argue with police officers, but I guess that's the way young people act these days. But the police officers apparently knew what they were doing, and they got the thing quieted down. Now, this whole thing raises some questions in my mind. First of all, if you're gonna have the potential of a thousand people in your neighborhood, that's not a block party. Secondly, are people who wanna have block parties where there might be people from elsewhere coming, are they required to have liability insurance? Because I think for that number of people, you might have had, if not physical damage, you might have had a lot of property damage. There are too many mornings when I wake up on a weekend when I find beer cans in our front lawn and paper cups and plastic cups all over the street. That's not so bad, but, you know, they could trample, a lot of us now have gardens in our front yard, and they could trample. It's a pretty good investment in our front yard gardens, and we would happen. So there is a question, do they have liability insurance? Do they have drab shop insurance? Back in the 1960s, when I was active, having political fundraisers, we decided we better have drab shop insurance for these fundraisers. I think we were the first at the time to do that, and as a result of our doing this, the Democratic Party, I know, now carries drab shop insurance. I don't know about the Republicans, and Joe's not here tonight, but we have drab shop insurance when we have these political get-togethers. Well, should these kids be required to have drab shop insurance? I remember that one of the neighbors was raising money for a charity that night. Came in, you paid your money, you could drink all the beer you could, and anything left over after the cost of the beer was going to some charity. Well, I remember when we gave money to charities without having to drink a lot of beer, but I guess those times have changed. Some of us still do that. And now, this raises a really great number of questions. I think we were lucky on Saturday because of the rain. But I am concerned about this. I know that the mayor has been looking into this with the administration. I've talked to Councilwoman Pat, and she's concerned about this, some of the concerns that I have and that the mayor has. But I would like the council to take a real good, hard look at this sort of thing and really tighten up on those regulations. I know for one that I felt, you know, when these kids start to have this loud noise, and as I told the mayor in Esther, I went to bed at 1:00 that night, and I'd turn on an air conditioner, a room air conditioner, to have some white noise when it's loud outside. But that, that constant beating, I could hear that over the sound of my air conditioner, which is pretty unusual, that's how loud, loud that one was. And I woke up at 3:30, and I noticed downstairs, there was still a lot of milling around, a lot of cars being moved around. And I think in a residential neighborhood where you do have some young kids living in that block, and you have some old people, I'm the oldest, but we have some old people living in the block, that this sort of thing really has to be better controlled. And I know that this is a concern to the mayor, to Esther, and I hope it's a concern to the whole council, but I hope, Mayor, before you issue another permit, and maybe at this time of the year, you're not gonna be asked for a block party permit anymore. But I hope that by the time the spring rolls around, it can really give us a lot of hard thought and maybe really tighten up on this thing.
Thank you very much. Any questions from Mr. Paley?
No, just to follow up on Hiram's comments, you know, this is something that's been a challenge to us. I think everyone remembers the Canopy Club party a couple of years ago, and we've been trying to, to walk the fine line between allowing neighborhood parties where it comes out for a cookout and brings a side dish and chats about the kids and stuff like that, which is a perfectly wholesome American event, and a block party that turns into a rock party. And so every, some requests that don't fit neatly into either the category of a neighborhood block party or a special event, we've been trying to formulate the policy to regulate the two of them, to allow this type of activity because, you know, a lot of neighborhoods like to do it, but then try to differentiate between what really is a block party and what should be a special event, and that there are much stricter regulations for a special event than for a block party. And as this is a work in progress, this particular request for a block party brought up a lot of issues that we had not thought about before, such as should we allow amplified music at a block party, a neighborhood block party? You know, as, as I said, this is a work in progress. We told this particular group, well, you get the signature of everybody on the block, that it's gonna be okay, and we'll let you have amplified music. As we've thought about it and this particular experience, no amplified music at block parties anymore. If it's amplified music, it's gonna be a special event, and special events of that kind don't belong in residential blocks. And so that's one criteria that's gonna differentiate a block party from a special event. You mentioned drab shop insurance, liability insurance, which is a requirement for special events, screening, fencing around a special event area, security, those are other regulations. You know, for a block party, we're gonna require that you can't advertise it. So, I mean, it makes sense. I mean, if it's a block party, it's for those people that are on the block and their friends, you know, generally right in that neighborhood. It's not putting an ad in the DI or the Buzz and say, y'all come. So this has brought up a couple of, a number of questions, as you said, and we hope to be addressing them in a much more comprehensive fashion than we've had an opportunity to. As I said, you know, we've been working on this and been trying to anticipate all the types of requests, but when we do get a new request, it often brings up a lot of other questions that we hadn't thought about, and now we have, since this has come up. So, so we do have a pretty good idea right now what is gonna differentiate a block party from a special event, and if it doesn't meet the criteria of a block party, then they're going to have to meet the criteria of a special event, which are gonna be much, much stricter.
Pat?
Thank you. Just wanted to add to that, that we've had, we have an ongoing problem in our neighborhood with amplified music at night and late at night, and there've been a few specific instances that involve live bands outdoors. And I don't see how a live band can play outdoors without violating the city ordinance. But it concerns me that there is some perception at the police department that there's ambiguity about that. And I know when I, I was called by one of Mr. Paley's neighbors on, on Friday night and Saturday morning, I called over to the police station, and first of all, they didn't have a copy of the permit for the special event, or at least the person I talked to was not aware of it, and that, if special event permits are going to be issued for anything, anywhere, the police should, we should be sure that they have it. And I understand that that is the procedure, and maybe there was just some problem. But what concerned me, while the woman I spoke with was very nice and much more responsive and helpful than when one calls, at least my experience has been calling MedCat, she still, I, I wanted her to tell me that I could call my constituent, but if, if the band was playing after 9:00 PM, the police would shut. And she said, well, it depends on, you know, if they give the, the police officers attitude, or it depends on how loud it is. And it seemed like it wasn't clear that amplified music outdoors violates the noise ordinance. There's no way you can play amplified music outdoors and contain the sound within the boundaries of your property, and if it's not contained within the boundaries of your property, you're violating the noise ordinance. So I'm hoping, Mayor, in addition to the focus on block parties, which happen, or special events only every now and then, but for the rest of this season and for, and for the spring, when it's gonna come up again, that there be a clear message and a clear policy for police officers that when they're called out in response to noise complaints and there's, there's amplified music being played outdoors, that they tell the people, it has to shut down now. I also think, you know, Mr. Paley mentioned, and I think this is a good idea, that, actually, for any noise complaint, whenever possible, if the police do ask people to shut down, and they shut down while the police are there, it's no secret that a half hour later, a lot of people turn up again. Now, I tell people, call the police back and tell them, and tell the person at MedCat that, that you called and the police were out there a half hour ago, and that these people just started the music again afterward, and that, so they'll tell the officer that, and the officer will know that. But it would be helpful, if it were possible, for some procedure to include the police going back to check, or at least if it's a big thing, to go back and check on it a half hour, an hour later, because this is a recurring problem with these, with these large parties. And I know, it was either last year, no, two years ago, when Neighbor House had an outdoor band, the, that's on Iowa and Lincoln, and a man who lived just a block away on Bucie and, and Iowa, called the police at 7:00 o'clock when the band was practicing. And the police did not come out and say to them, what you are doing is against the law, you will be arrested if you don't stop. And that needs, that needs to be told. They waited, they didn't come back till 10:30, and when, when one of the neighbors called, another constituent told me that when, when she called, well, actually, her southern law called, the dispatcher said, this is the 10th, you're the 10th caller. Like, do I win something for being the 10th caller? Like, how many 10 people have to call, and the police haven't shut it down? So then the police came out and ticketed, but it was still another hour before they finally said, you gotta shut it down. And I don't, being arrested, but I know the police threaten arrest, and in fact, do arrest people for all sorts of other things that involve not doing what a police officer tells you. I think when the police officer tells you, you can't play, have a live band outdoors, you have to shut it down now. If people don't, maybe if the police said, if you get arrested, if you don't, the band would stop playing. And not just talking to the one guy who's the president of the fraternity, or the person, the tenant of the house who they happen to see, but telling the people in the band, you're breaking the law, you will be arrested if you don't take this band down now. I think that might be a little more effective.
Well, those points are noted, and I'll speak with our police department personnel and make sure that everybody understands noise violations and we're all clear on what the procedure is. So, you know, thank you for that input, and we'll get on taking care of it.
Mr. General?
In response to Ms. Pat's statement, I'm thinking of lots of different special events where amplified music is used out loud, outside, and it's heard throughout the neighborhood, and I don't hear people complaining about it. And so I would like some clarity about whether or not we're talking only about block parties in West Urbana, or are we talking about the Park District Summer Nights at Crystal Lake Park, the Park District Summer Nights at Carl Park, the County Fair, the Sweet Corn Festival? They're all special events. They all have, they all play music outdoors, and it's amplified music, and it extends, I'm, I'm always six or eight blocks away from that, and I can still hear it. I don't want those kinds of things to go away from our community, and I don't want, you know, music, musical events to be completely prohibited. And so I wonder if there's some way to clarify where that line is, because there are many instances of, that are in our culture already of these amplified noise events outside.
Well, let me take a stab at that, you know, and if we can keep going on this, the council will probably recreate the conversation that we've had at the staff and administrative level for the last year and a half, and we'll be here for six months talking about this. But that, you know, you're exactly right. I mean, should we treat Sweet Corn Festival different than, you know, somebody that's got, that wants to have a special man in their front yard? And I think the answer we came up with is yes. And we'll allow special events for something that, like the Sweet Corn Festival or Neighborhood Nights in the Park, that the, that the Park District is sponsoring, or the Blues Festival that they have at Crystal Lake Park. And so, but it is a difficult thing to, to determine who gets to have a special event and who doesn't, and who's gonna be responsible at conducting a special event, and who isn't gonna be responsible at conducting a special event. And so it really is, you know, a complex issue, but we've been trying our best to differentiate between, you know, just regular parties, block parties, special events, and, and what meets the threshold of those special events and what kind of criteria they need to abide by.
I guess I would just, it, it concerns me greatly that an organization, a professional organization such as Goldberg Productions, which puts on productions at the Canopy Club and is somehow in a different category than the Park District or the city in terms of who's able to have special events and not have special events, and who's permitted and not permitted. So I, I think that, that we should be very careful in deciding that as long as we're hosting the special event, it's okay if we blast music, loud rock music into, you know, West Urbana and North Urbana for, you know, into the evening, but if some other business in town decides that they want to host an event, organize that event, that somehow that's objectionable. I, I think that it should be about a certain set of criteria, decibel levels, location of, of the speakers, the way the speakers are pointed, et cetera, rather than this idea that there's some category of individuals who are more responsible, and therefore they should be allowed to have this, and there is other categories of businesses and individuals who don't. That, it, that just seems discriminatory to me.
What?
I think that, that one of the main differences is not only the origin, the origin of the amplified music is in the residential neighborhood or in a commercial district or, or a park area, which I think does make a difference. But the other issue, as I recall it, when, a few years ago with the Canopy Club Late Night Party, was that it was, as I recall, on a late Sunday night, going till past 10:00 and perhaps past midnight. And, and so, as it was a school night, I think, for young children, that that was, I think, one of the main...
Night Party, was that it was, as I recall, on a late Sunday night, going till past 10 o'clock and perhaps past midnight. And so, as it was a school night, I think, for young children, that that was, I think, one of the main concerns. And the concern that Mr. Paley has brought up is obviously for, from a Saturday night, but also originating in a residential area. I think classifying these things, as the mayor has said, as special events, might help to clarify, you know, what's allowed, what's not allowed, and make sure there are some safety mechanisms, safety for the partygoers, and safety for the neighbors as well. I think that, I look forward to seeing that, and also that when, when we're called as council members about what's, what's the city going to do about this loud noise at midnight, or that sort of thing, we can say either, "This is what the policy is," because we've got that in front of us, or we can look it up in the city code, or if someone calls the police and asks about it, the police are able to say, "Oh, we've got it posted right here, let me read it to you, this is what the policy is," so that the 10th caller or the first caller gets the prize of knowing, you know, what the policy is.
Before I leave, these are things, including what Danielle just raised, that were discussed all over 30 years ago in this room, and it was not easy trying to find a solution then, it's not easy now, but the one thing that I think is important here is the time of night when these noises are being created. I know they call it music, I don't always consider it music, but that's just a difference, I think, in 40 years or so. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paley. Next, Al Weiss, 5 South Cedar Street.
Hi. Good evening. I'm here in support of the, I guess it's the City of Champaign's, but the discussion here is tonight about going forward with this study on looking at a municipal electric utility in Urbana. And just a little background on why I'm here about this, there's a small group of folks, both from Urbana and Champaign, and we got together about two years ago, and we were concerned, we're concerned with some of the environmental issues with electric generation, we were concerned with other issues in terms of deregulation of utilities and whatnot. And as we looked around for solutions for these problems, we found that there are municipal energy, or municipal utilities, municipal electric utilities in Illinois, who are doing a really good job of addressing a lot of the concerns that we had. And so, we started to explore the ways in which a small city could go about creating a municipal utility and putting one into place. One of the things that we found, though, before I address some of those things, is that when we look at small cities like Rantoul, just to the north of us, or to Springfield, both of which have long-established municipal electric utilities, their prices for power are significantly cheaper. Springfield, which is a slightly different case than we would have here, because they generate their own power, they have a couple coal-burning plants there, which is all Illinois coal, by the way, but their, their power plants, or their, their electric utility agency, has prices of three to four cents per kilowatt hour. So, that's about, you know, half of what we're paying here, on a good day of what we're paying. They have special rates for people on fixed incomes, so they're able to go for old folks and whatnot, they can say, "Hey, we've got a rate for you, so you're sure that you have power." They're also doing interesting things in Springfield, where they're saying that if people are being, using energy efficiently, which is very against the Illinois power model, if they're using energy efficiently, we'll give you a special rate as well. So, they're really working in a number of fronts, and in a really good way, so that'd be a very good model to look at. They've actually had a couple of problems in the past couple of years as well, they, those also might be good things to look at. Again, and Rantoul might be a better model, though, for us, we do have some, as you mentioned before, generated capacity within the university here. But they are hooked into a group called the Illinois Municipal Electric Association, which are people that you might want to get in touch with as well. But that's a nonprofit corporation, it's power for a bunch of different municipal utilities around the state. So, they're able to get a bulk rate for a number of different company, or for, for all these different municipalities, and then buy the power, and they get the power in at a very good rate, a very good wholesale rate, and then distribute them on the municipalities. And again, if we look at costs, what they're, they're paying, and you can find, again, Springfield's rates are on the web, and Rantoul's rates are also on the web, try finding IP's rates on the web. But if you look at their rates, they're about six cents a kilowatt hour. Last time I looked, that's just information about a year old, but I don't think they've substantially raised. So, again, we're looking at, for the end user, for the consumer, for the basic household, you're looking at significant yearly savings when you go and look at these things. I want to address a couple of the issues that were raised here earlier, and one of the things was this idea of expertise, and there are two groups that I think the city should contact. One I mentioned already is the Illinois Municipal Electric Association, the other one is the Illinois Municipal Association, and if anybody's interested, I can get you addresses and contact information for those. And they have lobbying, they have established lobbying, you know, power within Springfield, and they know the law very well in regards to establishing a municipal utility, establishing an electric municipal utility as well, and also on the practicalities of what you'd have to go through. The other place you might look to is there's the fellow who runs the municipal electric utility up in Rantoul, his name's Greg Hazel, I believe, I believe he's still there, he was there a year ago. And he's also a very nice fellow, and he is very informed on the actual practical things that would be needed, what kind of equipment would be needed, what kind of infrastructure would be needed, and things like that. The other thing that's going to be needed, I believe, is an engineering firm, and this should go into the cost, because you're going to have to find a cost of the actual grid itself. Because according, the way I understand the law, and the lawyers all around here could correct me, perhaps, that we do have, in Urbana and Champaign, have the power to disenfranchise Illinois power if we want to, but that will not be a friendly breakup, and that that will be a competitive breakup, where you'll have to go and, or maybe, it depends, I've read in the news gazette as well, that Illinois Power may be willing to sell, or Diamond G may be willing to sell, or Exxon may be willing to sell, depending on which organization you want to talk about, may be willing to sell, and then you need to know the price, and that's a real good starting point. That's also going to be the real starting point on how this gets paid for, because, you know, if it's $100 million to the grid, or 30 million, which is about what, you know, very back-of-the-envelope calculation that some folks came up with, is going to be whether or not it's doable, because I would assume it would be paid for with revenue bonds, based on the revenue from the utility itself. This would get fed into the cost of the power. So, if it gets, if the grid is exorbitantly expensive to buy, then the price of power would probably be too much for the citizens of Champaign or Urbana to spend. One of the things I also wanted to mention here, Mayor Satherthwaite mentioned high tech and the needs there, and this is actually one of the really interesting areas for this. Right now, what we see with the business model and deregulation is a cutting back on the production of energy, and this makes perfect sense if you think about what the business is. If you want to have enough generating capacity for peak times, you need to have big, giant power plants that are idle most of the time. So, what you want to do, if you're a deregulated energy company, is get rid of all those, that excess generating capacity, and just have stuff running all the time. Now, if you're looking at this from a municipal model, you can actually build that excess into your growth models and into your, your local models, so that you can have that excess. It's a little bit of investment, but it's an investment in the future, so that you can make sure that you had, in that energy supply that you're going to need. So, that's, it's, I think is a very vital part, and it's a vital part of sort of growth, long-term economic growth within Champaign and Urbana. And the other thing is, one last aside, and then I'll stop.
Anytime you want, sure, so how about closing up?
Okay, I'm all time.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have John Paul Schmidt, Illinois South Cottage Grove Municipal Utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes, and good evening to everyone. Like Al, who just spoke, I came here to talk about the electric utility situation. First off, I'd like to voice my support for Councilman Otto's suggestion that the City of Urbana go on record as opposing the bill which would fast-track the purchase of IP by ComEd, whatever their head corporation is, that would actually be doing the purchasing. I think in general, the reason you would fast-track it is you would have less public input because you trust the utility so much to do a good job. I think everything that has been done about this is, an argument is to why you shouldn't trust them at all. They don't want any public input, they're going to ignore you if they can, and slowing down, or and basically speeding up the regulatory process is just going to put the city and the entire, you know, part of the state that's served by IP at a disadvantage. There's already a feeling that it's hard to get expertise just to comment on the bill which would speed up the purchase, it's going to be far complicated once you're confronted with the actual documents related to the deal. Secondly, I'm also in support of Urbana's establishing a municipal utility, with or without the help of Champaign and the University of Illinois, and I think Al hit all of the major points, but a couple of things I'd like to add to that is that, well, having a municipal utility gives us control of the ability to have a good service, including the tree cutting, which, as you all recall from a year or two ago, was a big issue. A second thing, as Al said, the rates are much cheaper. The Illinois Municipal Energy Association, which he spoke about, which is like the big co-op, which buys power in bulk, in 2000 and 2001, there, the rate that they were charging to their member cities was less than four an hour. My recent bill, I was charged 13 cents per kilowatt hour for residential, and that four and a half cents is actually, it's been steadily declining. In '92 to '93, they were charging just over five cents, so in that two, 10-year period, they've knocked prices down, I guess, about 10%, and I would assume they'll be able to continue to do that. In 1999, the U.S. Department of Energy did a study of electric rates throughout the country, and one of the things they did is they compared, in the state of Illinois, what do you pay if you are charged by a municipal utility versus what do you pay if you're buying electricity from an investor-owned utility like ComEd or IP? And what they found is that people who bought from the investor-owned, the big corporations, residents paid 30% more on average for electricity, commercial rates were 19% higher for electricity, but industrial rates, the commercial utilities charged 4% less. Obviously, if Urbana had control of the utility thing, you can, but it shows you can have drastically reduced rates by going with the municipal utility. And I guess the final point I'd like to make is that earlier Mayor Satherthwaite talked about the needs of high-tech industries, and oftentimes, local politicians from both cities and the county and so forth, talk about one of the keys to future economic growth for the area is an investment in high-tech, sort of leveraging the University of Illinois that's already here. One of the long-term problems that people say, at least Urbana has, with encouraging growth, is that it has a relatively high property tax rate compared to a lot of the other municipalities in the area. If Urbana could offset that by giving high-tech industries a lower electric rate, and many of the, that may actually end up being a bigger benefit, because obviously, high-tech, almost by definition, means you use a lot of electricity, and so that, but, you know, obviously, we can't predict how well that would work out, that would be another tool that the city council would have in order to attract growth to Urbana. And I guess that's it, thank you.
Any questions? Very much. With no more public input, we'll get to the agenda. We start at item 6 of 2003-10-119, an ordinance approving a second amendment to assert certain Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization agreement with Homestead Corporation, EZN Lincoln. Mr. Booth?
Good evening. We put forth an amendment that would allow the city to pay Homestead a prorated share of their development fees prior to the home actually being transferred to the buyer. This would give Homestead the ability to improve their cash flow position. I believe we alerted city council that this would be forthcoming in an amendment to this development agreement with Homestead. We've indicated that the agreement provides for a $7,000 development fee for the five houses, initial five houses, and that would be paid upon completion of the units, and we're simply asking that Homestead be allowed to receive payment for work completed, in other words, a prorated share of the work done. Jim Hayes is here this evening with Homestead, if there's any particular question. Jim Rose, thank you, Miss, excuse me. Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Pat?
We move to send the ordinance to the city council with the recommendation for approval.
Second.
We moved and seconded that this ordinance be sent to the city council for approval. Any questions? For favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, it will be sent to council. Ms. Sam Evans, Resolution Number 2003-10-023R, a resolution endorsing the Urbana-Champaign continuum of care, 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness.
Good evening. If you remember, I came to you a number of months ago and told you that we were, as a continuum, going to have to work on this. At the back of the plan is a list of the persons who participated in the many meetings that we had, I think it's been about nine months now that we've been working on this. First thing we did was to identify some of the gaps in the communities and to develop strategies. The plan is named to the 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness. You'll see in the plan that there is a clearly defined, very limited definition of chronic homelessness. The plan does not itself direct just chronic homelessness, which would be individuals who have a disability and are homeless for more than a year, or for four or more times in three years. We do look at homelessness as a general issue in this plan and developing these strategies. However, those persons who are defined as chronically homeless will be targeted by the not-for-profits for services, thus meeting the congressional and the federal mandate to do so. But we wanted the plan to be more, more widespread for the community, to look at some of the other issues of homelessness that we had in the community, so we did incorporate that into the plan. We are asking this council's endorsement, the plan has been sent to all of these agencies and organizations, asking for their endorsement also.
Heard a request, a resolution, any questions? Ms. Channell?
Yeah, I don't have any particular questions, but as the council representative to this committee, I just wanted to point out a couple of things about the document that I feel are really positive. If you look at page five, at the top, the third bullet point, it refers to develop a safe haven option for emergency shelter with 24-hour availability. We talked a lot about the fact that we don't really have services in town where you have a safe haven where you don't necessarily have to partake of services in the safe haven, so there, there's a kind of, a need to develop trust amongst chronically homeless individuals with disabilities, and the need for perhaps a place where they can get their basic needs met without necessarily having to participate in services, and then from there, they might move on to a situation where they would be involved in supportive services. Bullet point number five refers to some problems I really wasn't aware of until I served on this committee, sure, there probably other council members were, but I was just completely appalled that our Department of Corrections currently basically ejects inmates into the community off- oftentimes without identification, without basic paperwork, sending inmates to GCAP, which provides services for those who are HIV-positive with two weeks of meds when it takes GCAP at least 30 days to get medicines, basically putting people's inmates' lives at risk. And so we talked to some degree about a need to really, basically to stick it to the DOC that they can't release inmates this way and that we really have to, as a community, focus on this problem where inmates are being released without just the very basic paperwork and support that they need to go on to the next step. So that was something we talked about that's in this document. Another thing I wanted to point out at the end, towards the end of page five, we, the plan speaks about developing a 50-single resident occupancy bed spaces for single persons, especially to incorporate housing options with less restrictive felony constraints. And as council members probably know, we have an SRO in this community that's been quite successful, run by Homestead Corporation. And we talked about that being a model for some of the future projects that we, and one of the things that we heard from the single resident occupancy from Homestead and actually not from Homestead, but from the service providers that send people, if you look at the little chart, the chart that basically sends people from transitional shelter, emergency shelter to transitional shelter and then transitional to some kind of permanent housing, that one of the weak links in trying to get people from transitional housing into permanent supportive housing and permanent housing is that we have a criteria for SRO that does not allow anyone with any felony conviction, no matter how old that conviction may be, to not reside in that location. And therefore, wins, I think, as a community for people who have felony convictions. I would note to council members that several instances of, say, shoplifting constitutes a felony. So we should have an understanding of what a felony looks like and it isn't necessarily, you know, breaking and entering or something like that. So that we have a problem with getting those folks into permanent homes. And then the last thing I would point out is just the network for foster families to mentor homeless persons. We talked about a model that actually religious communities use where churches have transitional shelters and then they actually work with families in those religious communities within the church to either mentor or provide specific support for a specific homeless family or homeless individual. And so trying to look and see if that model might be something that works in our community as well as something that we considered and wrote into the goals of this plan. So I just wanted to thank our grants management and the actual, the committee. It's in quite a few months of work on a regular basis to outline this 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness.
No more comments? Mr. Otto?
I had some questions. Is the federal government going to be giving out grants to help us implement the strategy? Or I'm trying to figure out exactly what the significance of what we're passing is.
What this will do is lead the continuum in the discussions when NOFA's grant opportunities are available. We can look at this for ideas of what we should be applying for, which programs we should be putting forth for applications. There are many funding availability, funding programs available. HUD, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, is our primary funding source at this time. However, they're working closely with Health and Human Services and also the Department of Labor for programs and funding sources that will address chronic homelessness. So hopefully, we'll be able to use some of these strategies to develop programs and apply to the federal government for monies to support them.
But this would basically be applying for programs that are already existing. The federal government isn't creating a new program.
Yes, they are creating new programs, new funding sources. What they're doing, actually, is redirecting some of their avail, to serve this particular population.
Okay. I guess the thing that, you know, I look at this and the major problem that's confronting efforts to address poverty and homelessness right now is that the federal government is shirking its duty. They're stepping away from the plate. They're not providing resources. And it appears that what's happening is, you know, now they're going to cut some programs to help some poor people and redirect them to this program. And I understand that's not your fault, but
Thank you.
It's a frustration to me because I see exactly what's happening in the memo. There's going to be a Bush administration official present to accept this plan. Representative Tim Johnson is going to be present to accept this plan. And they're both going to try to take credit for fighting homelessness, when in fact they've been exactly the opposite. Where are they planning on trying to accept the plan?
I'm sorry?
Where, they're talking about accepting the plan when it's presented to them. Where is that going to happen?
Oh, on the 18th of November.
That'll happen in Springfield.
In Springfield.
Okay. Well, I guess I wish that the Bush administration, Representative Johnson, would be more interested in just holding press conferences and would come and present themselves to the council. And here are concerns, and obviously, I don't expect that to happen. But I think if they were sincere about addressing the problem of homelessness and poverty and these issues, that is what would happen. Instead, what we're going to end up seeing is re-dividing a pie that the Bush administration and Congressman Johnson are cutting. And it's not a sincere effort. It's going to be press speeches, campaign ads, and, you know, lines in presidential speeches to make it look like they're doing something about it, when in fact, they're not. And it's disappointing and it's frustrating.
I'm afraid you're probably right, but Mr. Mungano will be giving us the opportunity when we meet with him to present him some of our activities in the continuum and some of the problems we face. One of the things that we hope to make clear to him is that by limiting this definition of chronically homeless, that he is limiting our ability to help homeless families particularly. We would like this information to get back to Congress. And we're hoping that this would be an opportunity to possibly to pass that on to them.
It's just a tremendous frustration to me when you see even tax cuts, when they're passed, they carve out an exception to make sure that poor people don't get the income tax breaks, that rich people are getting in much larger amounts and much more significant quantities. And I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Lam?
Yeah, just, well, I wanted to thank Ms. Chenoweth and Grants Management Division for their work on this. But I also think, you know, the idea of having a larger SRO, I think, is important and certainly a positive step. The single resident occupancy building that we have on Grigg Street, just a block away from now, from where I now live, is something I was really proud to work for. And I think it's a wonderful asset to the neighborhood and to our community and something certainly that is, that we need more of. But we also think, as the entire council would recognize, more support for homeless or chronically homeless families with children. It takes even more money to support, you know, an adult with a child than it does a single adult. And I think that, you know, it takes an entire community to support that. And I hope that that will be something that this group will continue to work for, whether or not it's in the, it fits exactly in the federal definitions or the revised definitions of our federal government. But I do think that this idea and this work is important also with the sort of infrastructure that this new, the leadership or plan leadership, as expressed on page seven, has brought together and will hopefully continue to work to make a more efficient use and new ideas brought forward with the ever-decreasing pot of federal dollars that goes to helping poor people in need of support. And so just want to add that and hope that the work will continue to also pay attention to the needs and concerns of families with children in addition to residents and also addressing the issue of how it is that people who have been convicted of crimes, whether it's when they were 18 or whether it was, you know, when they were 35 and it was, you know, stealing a pound of meat from the Kmart or something like that, will still be able to find a bed space to be able to sleep on. Thank you.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yeah, just to respond to Mr. Otto's comments, it's absolutely clear that Bush's initiative has nothing to do with helping people and that what his administration has identified is that there's a category of people that he can't let just sit in a corner and die because he'll get in trouble with the general population, although that probably is what he would prefer. And that he, and that takes a majority of the dollars, you know, of the entire home when there's a particular category, the chronically homeless, disabled, who take more resources. And it's really, it's very clear that it's just an issue of trying to minimize the impact of these particular group of people who take a certain amount of resources. And really, the helping part is, I don't think, really part of the picture. It's just trying to downsize, as usual. I would say, though, despite that, that I think this community and participating in this, I would say that I learned something as a council member, which it was very good to focus on a particular population narrowly defined and to think through with all of the social service agencies in the community and the city, what those particular, what that particular kind of narrowly-defined group of people needs and what's missing for them. And the monthly focus group that we had on that topic and leading through, we really, I think, as a community, took advantage of something that I agree really is, is to try to decrease the pot of gold that is spent on homeless individuals generally. And certainly, it's a shift away from women with families, et cetera, and towards a particular population that is primarily single men. But we took advantage of that and I think that we came up, we kind of shared information that wasn't out there before and came up with some holes in our strategies for that category of individuals. And we're going to take steps to kind of seal up those holes. I would like to see us do the same thing with other kind of discreetly-defined categories, even if there isn't a Bush administration requiring us to do so to be eligible for certain kinds of funding. I'd like us to do similar kind of for teenagers, for example, and just looking at, for youth, maybe folks under the age of 21, and then also looking at families with children who are homeless and what the particular needs are and what are the holes in our community. So we could use this as a model to do other kinds of things. I'd also say, Ms. Otto, if the language and the meeting concern you, I would, I can't be there that particular day, but I would love it if you went to Springfield, Illinois with our staff and represented council and said, "This is, this is what we present to you and it doesn't necessarily reflect our priorities as a community. It reflects your priorities and the relation that you put on us as a community." And we did a lot with what you gave us, but we have these other priorities of families with children and this diversion of monies from, you know, housing and homeless needs to, you know, ill-conceived wars, et cetera. And we would, and we want you to look again at your priorities. So it would be great if you were there and I'm also welcome any kind of changes to the ordinance or to the resolution as written.
I would just clarify my comments to say I did not mean in any way to denigrate or diminish the, all the effort and planning that went into this. It's obviously a very valuable, very important effort and hopefully, a lot of goodwill come out of that. It's just, I was speaking out of a sense of frustration that more, those in a position to provide resources are not doing it.
Ms. Matt?
Thank you. And I'll just add to that, it's, this isn't just an issue of whether resources are being shifted from families with children to single men. It's a question of whether there are actually any resources. The, whether this, this is a nice little document that we're doing, that we've prepared because HUD requires it of us, but there's not money coming back in exchange for this document. And the total budget for affordable housing has been cut by Congress and the funding for Section 8 vouchers has been cut. It's, it just amazes me how some of these policymakers seem to be so concerned about homelessness, but it's, I don't mean to oversimplify, but the solution to homelessness is housing. And how they expect to address the homeless, the problem of homelessness in any segment of the population without providing housing is, baffles me. But that's what they're going to have to do is provide housing, provide funding for housing, and all they've been doing is cutting funding for housing. I would, I'd like to move to send this resolution to city council with a recommendation for approval and with one change. Or would you like me to do that separately, move it and then make a motion to amend? Or? Yeah, all right. I move the resolution.
Second.
I move and seconded.
And now I'd like to make a motion to amend. This is a small change, but it's on page three in this regards the survey of homeless. It's just a small language change, but whenever we conduct these surveys, these are one-week surveys, and people tend to, when they cite these figures, cite them as though it's an annual total. And the annual total, we don't have a precise annual total. I think it's only, every time we do this, it's a week survey, but it should be clear that this is just in a week. So it's, second sentence, start at the second sentence of the first full paragraph on page three, the paragraph that starts, "UCCOC Urbana-Champaign Continuum of Care has surveyed homeless persons." If you jump down four lines. "In summary, the 2003 survey reported that," if you insert the words, "in one week Champagne County had," then change everything to past tense, "had approximately 315 homeless persons. 109 were children, two were minors, not with adults, and 16 were veterans. Of the 191 surveyed households, five were still in permanent housing pending eviction." They probably aren't anymore. "Seven had been homeless for less than one year, 27 temporarily, 38 episodically. Five did not answer. 116 had been homeless for more than a year or more than four times in the past three years. Of those 116 households, two were minors, 89 were single persons, and 25 were families." I move that as an amendment.
Second.
No more comments? We vote on the amendment first. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Main motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Who will be forwarded to council? Item number nine, ordinance number 2003-10-116. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the use of right-ofway, 410 North Vine Street.
Also probably for visibility.
The license agreement proposed is to grant Carter Furniture the ability to install a new sign within the city right-ofway. The right-ofway in this location is much wider than normal and it's due to the underpass that's there and the needs to sloping the wall and the construction of the underpass and the bridge years ago. And actually, that was a state route and that was jurisdictionally transferred to the city some years ago. But in this case, the location of the sign would not have any adverse impacts to visibility in and out of the driveway would have you were along Vine Street. But similar to other similar requests for use of right-ofway, we have an agreement before here. There are, I think, two minor changes that we'd like to make on the agreement that's before you. And the first item would be in paragraph B on page one of the agreement for use of right-ofway, 410 North Vine Street. We would be wanting to insert the words after, in the second line of paragraph B, we would be inserting, I'll just read the sentence, "The owner is herein granted by the city a limited license to erect and maintain a sign within such right-ofway that," comma, and we insert these words. and we insert these words, "other than as modified herein, comma, et cetera."
Which line was that?
Paragraph B, second line.
Mr. Gray, if I can interrupt for a moment. I did pass out a copy that each of you should have in front of you that's not in the packet that you earlier received, that shows that addition, add another addition, in strike-through underline format, freestanding.
And just to note, a second change in paragraph C. Other than that, just to note in paragraph H, the 410 North Vine Building Corporation would need to secure an advertising permit from IDOT, too, which is fairly straightforward. And the reason why they're involved is actually they're the actual owner of the land, even though we have the jurisdiction of Vine Street here, they're the actual owner of the land. So that's another hoop that, in this case, they have to jump through. So I'm happy to field any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Gray? Now the motion would be in order.
Counsel, with recommendation for approval, the agreement for the use of right-of-way at 410 North Vine Street, it was on our desks when we arrived this evening.
Second.
The ordinance seconded, that this ordinance be sent to council for approval, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, here and then, it will go to council. Now I have a landfill update. Mr. Gray?
We do. We, Rod Fletcher, report number five, and it's fairly brief, but we haven't updated the council lately on activities. And in summary, there's been a fair amount of field work that's going on out there and which is kind of outlined and bulleted in this memo. If you have any questions, be happy to try to answer those. I think what we're all kind of waiting for is their really, their reports, and we're expecting that sometime next month. We were just discussing this week, that today, that there needs to be some survey work necessary through the Assailing Branch area that hopefully will be completed in the next few weeks, and they need that information to help them with their report. So that's kind of the status of things, or details of the field work are aligned, like I said, and Rod's been out in the field every day when they were here in town doing the field work, if there's any questions. But we're moving along, making progress. Similarly, it's not mentioned in the report here, but also moving forward with our storm sewer design and for the Butzall ditch, and we're going to have GeoSynTech kind of value engineer our design here with their expertise, so look at what we're doing in-house to be sure we're optimizing, what we're trying to accomplish in minimizing the number of dollars needed to spend out there, so. Any questions?
Questions on the update? Ms. Bet?
Just want for clarification, when this, we get the report next month, is that when we're going to know how much this will cost, or is that just the first step toward getting to that knowledge?
It's going to be a range, a few solutions to look at perhaps, I don't know if we'll be focused on any particular one at that point, or do you know, Rod?
They'll probably suggest perhaps a few options preliminarily, but really, their site investigation report is just going to report on what the conditions are and what the problem is at the site right now. They'll be coming back then with, after we review their site investigation report, back with another document that will give various options and various costs for those options to remediate the problem.
Thank you for the update on the landfill. You want to talk about this residential and multifamily recycling contracts?
We do. I think this is good news. We had two real good proposals come in, one from ABC Sanitary Halling and the second from Central Waste Services. The details of their responses are in the packet, and I'll let Rod go into the details.
Basically, the responses we received, as Bill mentioned, were real favorable. Both firms submitted prices $1.90 per unit for a five-year period. That's up about five and a half percent over the current cost of $1.80 that we pay for the residential program. For the multifamily program, overall, ABC's cost for this price schedule was approximately $467 a month less than what Central Waste proposed. Staff met and we discussed the responses, we felt that there were certain values in retaining both firms to perform their respective programs in terms of redundancy for collection and processing, and also their familiarity with the current services that they're providing in those programs. We contacted Central Waste to see if they would match ABC's proposal. They agreed to do that. And basically, we're recommending to council that we receive authorization to enter to negotiations with ABC to provide recycling services for residential program and Central Waste to provide recycling services for the multifamily program for the next five years.
How many people are, how many apartment units are served by a pair of toters?
It varies on the size of the unit. We provide two toters that are collected once a week for up to eight units.
Okay.
And then it varies on a scale, depends on the actual size of the unit.
I remember talking about this a little over a year ago and trying to figure out, if you're doing eight units for $23 a week, I mean, that comes out to about $3 a unit, which is quite a bit higher than, not quite $3 a unit, but very nearly $3 a unit, which is quite a bit higher than the $1.90 a home that residential costs. And that's certainly counterintuitive, because all of, you know, you have units together in groups, so you would expect the per-unit cost of apartments to be lower than residential, not higher.
Mm-hmm.
And we talked about it at the time, and I don't know that we, there was really an opportunity at that point to get an explanation for it, but have they explained why they think it's more expensive per unit to collect apartments rather than residential?
Though, we can certainly put the pressure on when we negotiate contracts, see if we can't get those perhaps even down a little less, but.
Okay.
It is kind of contrary to what you would, you would think.
Yeah.
Those are the responses that we received.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I am perfectly happy to go ahead and suggest, support you guys proceeding with negotiations on the contract, but I hope whenever, the contracts will come back to us for approval, is that right?
Right.
Okay. I hope when they do, we'll sort of know if there's still a discrepancy between apartments and residential, why it would be. I mean, there may be a very good reason why they are, I don't know. I'm not in the recycling business. But I hope at that point, you know, we'll know at least what their rationale is for charging so much more for apartments. And if, I guess, one of the things, when I look at the bid proposals, anytime you have only two bidders, there's a problem, competition, there's a temptation to sort of divide up the market. And I think it's good to try to keep two companies in town in the business of doing that at the other time. And on the other hand, given how tight our budget is, which is extremely tight, you know, the 500 bucks a month we've already saving are almost, 500 bucks is almost going to add up to 6,000 a year, which in many years would not be a great amount, but this year is actually a significant portion of our surplus. And if there's a way that we can try to get the apartment rate down closer to what the residential rate is, or even lower, which is what intuitively it seems like it should be, it would really provide a substantial cost-saving, and that's certainly money that there's going to be demands on the city budget for elsewhere.
I wanted to make a motion authorizing staff to negotiate a contract with ABC to provide residential service and a contract with Central Waste Services for the multifamily contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that the residential and multifamily recycling contracts go forth to the city council. Ms. Chenoweth?
Yeah, just a quick note, I also am a little puzzled about the same question Mr. Otto had, so if we were able to find something out about why the difference in rate based on multifamily, maybe there's more processing involved, or, you know, the equipment is more expensive or something, that would be good. I will note, however, for the listening audience, that we're looking at a five and a half percent increase on this particular service over a 12-year period, which is really phenomenal, that basically residents are dime a month increase, and actually, it only costs, for those who buy their garbage privately, and I think in Urbana, that's generally the way things are done, paying $2 a week for this service, under $2 a week for the services, uh, a month, excuse me, under $2 a month for the service is really pretty, a pretty good price, and I'm quite pleased that they haven't increased their prices significantly and that we're really looking at, you know, if we look at our water, we've gone up 10% and then another 10% just in the last handful of years. If we look at our power, we can say the same. But if we look at our recycling program, the city has really kept a hold on the price of this recycling, and we're looking at, you know, just really minor increases in costs over the course of a, we had a seven-year contract, and now we're looking at a five-year contract. So really, over the course of 12 years, a 5% increase is pretty amazing. Oh, and Ms. Huth is telling me that garbage has gone up $2 a month in the last year alone, so we've seen increases in garbage as well. So I think we've done a good job of controlling the costs on this particular service to the community.
Ms. Bet?
I have to agree, in terms of continuing to have the service, it's a good thing, and I'm pleased from that perspective that we haven't seen the price go way up. As far as the point Mr. Otto raised about the cost for multifamily versus owner-occupied homes, obviously, it's, you know, this isn't about real costs, this is about them setting it a price that they think will pay. It's, if you own a single fam, if you live, if you rent, if you live in a single-family home, you're paying maybe $14, $16 a month for your garbage collection, and then $2.25 a month for your recycling. I live in a seven-unit multifamily building, and we pay more for recycling every month than we do for garbage hauling. Okay, so, and it's the same thing, it's, you know, once a week, a truck comes, pulls up into the, you know, the drive and empties two containers, except the garbage containers, which they then have to, you know, drive it all the way to, from Ullman County, that's, well, actually, it's probably not cheaper anymore because the rates just go, but they're about the same, because it's not $2.25 for the building, it's $2.25 a month per apartment. And so, I'm in a seven-unit building, so that's, you know, it's 15, 15.75 a month we're paying to have our two toters emptied of recycling. And that is, I'd love to hear the explanation, I can't imagine what explanation is, that it costs them more to empty recycling than it does to empty garbage and go to the landfill and pay tipping fees and everything else like that. But I'm happy to pay it, because we pay less for garbage than we did before we had recycling, and that's worthwhile, but I don't, I don't believe that these figures make any sense at all, that the cost of multifamily should be per unit the same as what it is for a single-family home.
No more questions, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Both, here and then, they pass us.
Just a clarification, I think you said this was going to go to city council, this is actually just a motion to allow staff to negotiate with the two providers, and so we won't see it back at council until we actually have contracts. Yeah.
Okay. And now I have a discussion on commercial recycling.
As we continue our discussion on commercial recycling, there are a couple of items that, when I reviewed prior documents, that we need to get some further clarification and direction from council on. I kind of highlighted a couple of those. One was the definition of commercial establishments. That definition that is in your packet is been pulled from several different other ordinances from other communities, and pretty much hits what I believe to be all the commercial establishments that council would envision becoming a part of a program. The second item is the type of program. Basically, there are two options, there's, we can mandate a program, either we mandate service be provided by either a hauler and/or a business would be mandated to secure or provide a program. Either way, we have the other entities. We certainly, I note here, if we did perform some sort of a mandate, would certainly require additional staff time for enforcement, and logically, one would assume that we'd have some sort of penalties or some sort of enforcement mechanism for noncompliance. I also wanted to note that, of course, both our residential multifamily recycling programs, participation is voluntary. In a voluntary program, as envisioned, we would require haulers to offer the services to all their commercial customers. Participation by the businesses would be left up to the businesses. Haulers would be required to notify twice a year via printed material to their commercial customers, the availability of the service where that service would be, and the benefits Item in particular, the type of program is, really is the top item for council to consider. And perhaps, I'll talk about this focus group a little bit later, that may be the, really the highlight for this focus group to come to decision with council as we progress here. Commodities to be collected, we could require the single largest commodity generated to be collected, the two largest, or for any commodity for which a viable market exists. Then we need to look at reporting requirements, I think that we would probably require haulers to provide information on the type and quantity of materials collected on a quarterly basis, perhaps semiannually, but I think quarterly basis would be more, keep our pulse on things a little more closely. Exemptions, there are exemptions that several communities have, to not participate in a program, in a mandatory program, as opposed to a voluntary program. One would be the size of business in terms of employees. For instance, they have less than five or perhaps 10, they might be considered exempt. Or that there may only be one commodity in a significant quantity to collect, or that there may not be a viable commodity for the commodities that may be generated from a commercial business. Or that there simply isn't a significant quantity of any commodity to collect, i.e. they're maybe generating perhaps less than one cubic carat a month. So those are some things to think about in terms of exemptions if council desires a mandatory program. Implementation, I've talked with several haulers about this. Implementation, I've talked with several haulers about this, they've indicated to me that at least they need a six-month window for start at a minimum to gear up to provide a program. Also provide some other information, and attached memo on our fourth report that provides some information on a survey that we sent out last summer to businesses. And one of the results, and there are several here that I've kind of highlighted, but one of the, one of the significant, I think, responses to that was, almost half of the responses that we got was to allow businesses to, the option to voluntarily determine whether or not to recycle. Finally, we've been working last several weeks on diversion rates, both citywide for various waste sectors and the city as a whole. We estimate that the current diversion rate for commercial industrial sector is about 50%. We estimate that about 13,000, nearly 14,000 tons of waste are generated from this sector in Urbana a year, and from reports that have been given to us and other estimates that we calculated, we estimate there are approximately 6,800 tons of commodities being recycled, so that's given us about a 50% diversion rate overall from the commercial and industrial sector. Staff also believes that the creation of a focus group with perhaps three or four members from the commercial business side, the haulers themselves, and of course, council would be worthwhile as we discuss this, and also getting information from their perspective on how they would like things to proceed, and we could come back within next couple of weeks to make recommendations on a focus group, and I'm here to listen.
I had a couple of questions or comments on this, on your October 21st memo. You talk about the type of programs being mandatory and voluntary, but it seems like the one that's missing is, at least to me, the most obvious one, and that is a commercial, a u-cycle commercial recycling pickup, where the city would contract, as we do for residential recycling, to go and pick up, you know, throughout the week at various commercial sites, and I don't know if it would be so simple as Monday is at more offices that would generate the office paper and cardboard, and it, you know, on another day of the week would be more of the restaurants and other types that would generate the bottles and the aluminum cans and that sort of thing, but it seems to, as the city of Urbana has had such a successful u-cycle program with contracting to have recyclables picked up at residences, that even though there would be some difference, obviously because there's different materials that are generated at different businesses, that a sort of contract for recycling pickup that goes through the city would help to, would help to meet the needs of recycling pickup for various businesses, but help to also control the costs and provide businesses something that, or a service I think a lot of businesses have said that they've needed, and I know that when I've gone out, that business people will ask me, when are you going to take care of commercial recycling? We want commercial recycling, and it's obviously, it seems the logical next step, and I guess I'd like to, one of the types of programs offered to be that of an expanded city recycling program from residential to now be completely comprehensive, and that is including the commercial through a city contract.
Well, the staff has certainly looked and discussed this particular option that you mentioned. There are a couple of complicating factors. One is that the commercial services that are being provided by haulers in terms of waste and recycling are kind of intertwined. The commercial businesses are already effectively recycling, about half of the material is being generated from commercial businesses right now. A lot of businesses offer recycling as an incentive to gain that commercial customer in terms of their garbage collection. For the city to come in and effectively take away one of their, I guess, incentives for perhaps doing business with a particular customer may pose some difficulties between the haulers and the city. Secondly, I'm not sure that we would see any significant cost savings by having a quote-unquote "commercial u-cycle" program. I think some of the rates that, again, that the haulers may be providing, and I think this would be important for them to explain that in a focus group meeting, too, but I don't think we would get any significant changes in that. And third, just to try to track all the commercial recycling is much more complicated than in a residential setting, if you will, in terms of accounting, and who's picking up what at what time, and what are the materials, and what are the costs involved, et cetera. But we could certainly bring that up for discussion.
I mean, I, yeah, I think it would be good to have that discussion, and I guess, I mean, your feedback, I think it'd be also helpful to be able to ask the haulers, I think, more kind of nitpicking questions about that, or to see if there's, if there's a way to, I mean, you say that there's 50% of the waste generated is being recycled, and is there a way to increase that, or is there, if waste haulers are already doing a wonderful job at decreasing, or at providing the recycling services, I guess, is there a way to do it better, is there a way that the city can, I feel like business owners, business managers wouldn't go up to me, or when I approach them for, to give them my credit card on a Saturday night, they don't come back and say, we want commercial recycling, unless, you know, somehow their needs aren't being met as far as the recycling, and perhaps there's a way that the city can help, can improve those services, or improve that amount that's being recycled, and so a focus group, I think, would be good, and looking, I mean, obviously, the biggest difference that I see in the commercial recycling as opposed to residential recycling is the fluctuation in what the business produces. While residences produce, you know, the newspapers and the glass jars and that sort of thing, businesses have a wide, there's a disparity in the amounts that are produced, and so looking at that, but seeing if there's, it seems to me there's a way that the city can help increase the amount that's being recycled, and perhaps help decrease the cost for both the waste haulers that are offering that recycling, and for the businesses who are having to pay for those services.
Ms. General.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments and questions. What if, is, in looking at this nationally, and I know at some point you looked at situations where mandated programs, I think this was two years ago when we first started talking about this, did you samples of this, or has staff discussed creating a program like the u-cycle program for businesses, that where the goal of the program is that it actually be self-sustaining after some X number of years, through a situation where we pay upfront, we pay for services, and then we participate in a profit sharing with the organization? So we're effectively, we have a 50, the rate of businesses participating in recycling is 70%, and we don't know what that means if they recycle on a monthly basis, or if that just means they recycle now and again, but if we were to make that 100%, there's certain cost benefits to the, to the recycling haulers when they go to sell the goods on the market, and I wonder if there's any way in which we could try to craft a program in which we, in some way, sharing in the profits, but being able to expand the market base of our recycling haulers. So the goal would be, just like we have a landscape recycling center that's self-sufficient, we would try to create some kind of commercial recycling program that was self-sufficient, and that may mean that we don't collect everything. It may mean that we collect the high-ticket items more than we collect the, kind of, the unusual, you know, cell phones and computers and things that cost a lot of money to recycle. So I guess I'll, I have a number of questions, but let me stop there. Is that something that staff has talked about? It seems like we're shying away because we think this is going to be an expensive endeavor, and I just wonder if we've actually considered whether or not it could be a self-sufficient program?
Well, I mean, a lot of programs, when they first came out, had clauses in them where they had cost share benefit. A lot of those programs that had those cost share benefits quickly went out of business when the market turned south. The problem with, there's this common belief out there that processors make inordinate amounts of money off the sale of recycled goods. That's simply not the case. The markets fluctuate, they go up and down. For instance, all the glass that we collect in our residential program, ship it up to Chicago, we don't make any money at all, or Steve Smith and ABC doesn't make any money at all on that, it's a break-even proposition. Aluminum, that was once up at, we saw prices of 1600 and 1400 dollars a ton for, you're now lucky to get, you know, anywhere from 400 to 600 dollars a ton. Aluminum used to carry all the program, if you will, that was a big money, money market item. That's no longer the case. Paper products certainly pick up, they fluctuate depending on how much our GNP goes, and how much we export and generate, you know, it's all tied into economics. The past several years, as everybody knows, has been not very good, and as a result, the market prices for the sale of materials is marginal at best. So processors or recyclers not only need an upfront cost just to provide the collection service, they need to cover their fixed operational costs and their profit in the fee that they charge for collection. And if they're lucky and they have some money from the sale of recyclable materials, that's fine, maybe that's extra gravy for them, perhaps, if you want to use that phrase, but it's not, and it's very difficult to ride the market and think that you're going to generate enough money from the resale commodities to have any substantial cost savings or cost share.
Stand to Rod's comments that, you know, some people think, particularly when, as you said, that we're able to get a lot of money for the recyclables, you say, well, somebody's really making a lot of money off of this, and the fact is, it still costs money for recycling programs, but the comparison is not, and how does it pay to do the recycling is, how does it compare with throwing that item away? And you do get some money for recycling it and processing it and so forth, otherwise you'd be paying, what's the tip fee at some of the landfills, Rod?
Thirty-three dollars a ton.
Thirty-three dollars a ton, otherwise you'd be paying 33 dollars a ton to landfill it, and so it's cheaper to recycle, but it still doesn't make money, and the real cost in recycling is the collection side of it. You've got to have personnel out there and expensive equipment, picking up materials, and then taking them to a site where they are processed, and generally, it's a couple of sites before they finally a processing plant. So it's not, it doesn't make any money, but it's less costly than throwing it away.
And really, the real benefit is in all the, if you will, the processing side and all the backside, you know, you pay, you pay the person, the person has to drive that material up to the processing facility, the processing facility has to employ people to sort out that material, then once, then you ship off those materials, so you need truck drivers to ship it to the mills. The mills use that aluminum can, you know, the aluminum that we recycle in the can is back on the shelf in six weeks. Every aluminum can the store has been recycled, and it's back on the shelf every six weeks. But it's all the economic spinoffs from just recent accumulated benefit, it's not what one household or one business may do, they may make, and they may save a few dollars here and there, but it's the overall accumulation of benefit that really makes the difference. In Illinois, that's 13 billion dollar a year industry, we employ 56,000 people in the recycling benefit, and we employ, there are 2,400 businesses in the state of Illinois that are involved in recycling, but it's all the activities that take place, if you will, after a landfilling scenario happens, that's the real benefits of recycling coming into place.
My follow-up question, then, is in the definition of commercial establishments, looking at other ordinances from other locales that included schools and government offices, my question to you is, how do our local schools currently recycle, if at all, and how does our government offices, not our own per se, but the county and et cetera, how do they currently recycle? Are you aware of their process?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I know there are some, but I don't know to a degree.
Yeah, I guess, just as we move forward, it could be possible, and I'd like to know how the school district does it, and if there's some ability to, you know, cost share, or some joint partnership in hauling recycling from the school, as well as hauling recycling from our commercial centers, it makes sense to look into that, rather than, say, having two different systems. Also, our park district, I don't know exactly how they go about doing it, so these kind of government entities, it would be good to see how they are currently recycling, and see if, as we move forward with some kind of solution, if they're brought into the fold, at least optionally, in that. And then the last comment is just this idea of having, it's hard to talk about, should we go this way or this route, without some set of goals, and I guess I would urge your office to really help us set some kind of long-term goals in terms of our diversion rate locally. I think the last time we talked about recycling, I brought up some statistics that we are, as a community, we pride ourselves on our u-cycle program, but we're really behind state and national averages in terms of our diversion rates, and I think that we should be setting certain kinds of goals and have some kind of long-term policy, and then, how does this fit in with that goal? It may be that there are different ways in which we meet that goal, and this, you know, having some kind of u-cycle program isn't it, but I'd like to know how exactly, you know, what are our goals, and how exactly we're going to meet those goals. We have that, you know, in, you know, we have our 10-year plan for Public Works, and we have our plans in grants management, you know, to end chronic homelessness, and we have these long-term strategies, so that we have a planning horizon, and we know what are our goals, and how are we going to meet those goals, and we set certain challenges for ourselves as a municipality, and that with our community diversion rate, and to see the city take the lead in making that happen, and then, I feel like these conversations would be easier to have, because I know, okay, what are the different steps that we're going to take, what's the whole complex of strategies towards the goal of, you know, recycling 35, 40% of our potential recyclables, or of our waste in the community.
We've been working the past couple of weeks, I should say, longer than that, actually developing and establishing our diversion rate, and in fact, we can discuss that in November 12th committee meeting, and bring forth information on where we're at citywide.
Well, I think, Rod, if you can, some of the actual statistics, I think, I'm not sure that the statistics that show that we're not up to the state and national standards, I think may not be comparing apples to apples, and are we including all of our yard waste diversion, are we including the commercial and residential components of our recycling program, get a picture of the entire community, and not just a couple of sections, and comparing that to other state and national figures that may include a larger base than what is in some of our figures.
We're right at the state and national diversion rates, so I, there's no doubt about it, we are. Typically, residential programs, when communities report recycling rates, or diversion rates, I should say, when people report diversion rates, residential, the residential portion of those typically generate between 20 and 25% of their total diversion rate. That's right where we are. City St. Paul, Minnesota, is 24%, City Springfield is 23%, we're right at about 23, 24%, so we're right on target, and we are right, right there with the national and state averages for... for total citywide diversion rates. And like I said, we'll bring forth more information to you on that specifically.
That'd be helpful.
Just one last thing. I think, Ms. Chairman, this idea of setting a goal is a good one. Suppose it's comforting to know that we're average, but I think that this council and this city wants to be anything but that. If we can look on November 12th to be above average and how we can, how we can get there, I think that would be very helpful.
November 12th is, you said you're coming back November 12th with more?
Ms. Wood.
First, let me start by apologizing. I was under the impression that what we're talking about right now is going to first come back on November 12th. And so this weekend, when I opened my packet, I was kind of caught off guard. I had told several people, November 12th would be it, and I hadn't done a lot to collect information to bring to the meeting. I know I was the one who had asked to have it on for this week, but when I heard November 12th, I thought I had a few more weeks to do some research. Okay, I said, I've got a couple of initial questions. I've got a newspaper article here, Rod, that says that the state's recycling rate average is 33.6 percent. That was a 2001 figure.
That's correct.
But you, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you just said that our recycling rate of something like 23 or 24 percent.
Our overall citywide rate were 35 percent.
Okay. The other question I had before I get into-
The residential portion of that is about 23 percent.
Okay. I have a memo from 2001 that says that the commercial diversion rate is 33 percent and in the memo that came in our packets, it says approximately 50.
That's correct.
So without any sort of city help, it went up that much in the last two years?
That's including city, city overall recycling efforts, yes.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
That includes over, 33 percent was what the several, the three largest commercial haulers reported us as recycling approximately 3,800 tons a year. We divided that figure into the total waste where we come up with 33 percent figure. In the recent calculations we've done, we've included not only that figure but other figures from other sources and other calculations to come up with 50 percent. And that'll be some of the information I'll share with you on November 12th.
When you say others source, I guess you're not being specific enough. We were just talking about apples, comparing apples to apples. The memo that you just gave us that came this weekend says, "Commercial Institutional Sector Recycling Rate is Approximately 50 Percent." The memo from two years ago, you're saying, even though it says, "Commercial Sector Total Waste Generated," I was assuming that the rest of those calculations were based on the Commercial Institutional Sector Waste Generated, but you're saying that's not actually the case? The 33 percent-
Was at the time what we knew and since that time, we've gathered more information, we've performed other estimates and we've, we've come to a higher rate than what was reported two years ago.
Okay, but I don't get to know how that happened until November 12th, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess just to respond to some of the comments that were made earlier, I'm a little confused about your comments about the competition that waste haulers would have some sort of conflict servicing businesses with recycling program that they may already serve with a waste hauling program. Every Monday morning, ABC Hauling comes to pick up my garbage and then on Thursday mornings, they come to pick up my recycling. For one, I pay, I think the rate is $11 a month now for my garbage and recycling is a 2.25. Yet-
To recycle it, you know, a big grocery seller, cardboard, they bail, a lot of them have bailers right there and pick it up. Well, they contract to, for waste services and recycling services. And so we may be infringing on that business relationship when they already have very favorable prices for both their recycling services and their waste hauling services. I think that was his point, that we're not, that if we enter into the marketplace, that we're not going to be able to give them any cost savings over and above what they're in.
I'm not advocating that, I don't know the answer to what, I don't know the answer to this two type of program, comma, options. I do like the idea of looking at a city-coordinated program, but I'm not saying that I support that over a mandate-driven program or a voluntary program. All I'm saying is that, that cost savings should be something that we should be focusing on regardless of what choice we make, you know, whoever is coordinating the program. That's my only point. And then there was comment about the complexity, the different, the waste stream being pretty different for commercial sector. And I just revert back to my, my other comment about the multifamily program comments. People were saying, oh my gosh, I can't possibly imagine how we could ever figure this out. You know, you've got apartment buildings that have a lot of space on North Lincoln Avenue, relatively speaking anyway, and those closer to campus that are just sporadically different in terms of their space needs and somehow we were able to figure that out. So I don't want to let something like this purported complexity of a program, let it sell ourselves short on what we could really do. Because I think we've got a really good multifamily program and I think we could have a really good commercial program as well if we can go and set goals and figure out from there how to reach those goals. So yeah, I was going to make the comment about having the focus group, letting council kind of hear some of the answers to some of these questions that I don't think anybody here tonight is able or equipped to handle or to answer. And then if we could come back on November 12th, I think that would be enlightening.
Ms. Brett.
Everyone keeps saying November 12th, but you're talking about the next council committee meeting, right? Because that's the 10th.
Oh, the 10th?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I have to clarify that. Unless there's nothing else going on Wednesday through 12th?
No, I thought it was on Monday. I'm sorry.
Let me get a clarification. It wasn't that we were suggesting that we'd be able to pull the task force together and get all the comment and bring all the comments back in two weeks, that we bring some additional information back and I think at that time, some suggestions for who would be on the task force and then have that task force meeting after the 12th. So I just didn't want anybody to have the expectation that this task force would be meeting sometime in the next two weeks.
No, or that we, on November 10th, I guess that we would be making any sort of radical decision on how to proceed with this.
Any more discussion? Since there's no more items on the agenda, we declare this meeting adjourned.